Welcome to the Master City Council meeting for Monday, March 2nd, 2020. We have an attendance with us tonight following city officials. Mayor Kathy Kazner Perry, Safety Service Director Bart Sylvester. From the Law Department, we have Law Director Justin Richards. And from the Engineers Department, we have David Prock, Jason Bokeel, and Greg Lekeel. And Economic Development Director David Maylie. Also in the audience, we have Commissioner William Smith. Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Smith. If you want to follow tonight's agenda on the wall, you can pick up an agenda. Under number five on the agenda, where anyone from the audience may speak on any topic that does appear on tonight's agenda, which would be fine because your mic works. And under number seventeen is where the public can speak on any item that does not appear on tonight's agenda. I'd like to remind you, please, if you have a cell phone, instead of mute, vibrate, or turn it off. Rule call. Kramer?
Present.
Greg?
Here.
Halter? Hernkane?
Here.
Lewis?
Brother.
Littman? Lombardi?
Here.
Sterrett?
Here.
And Therrit. Rule call of six present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lewis?
I make the motion to excuse the council persons not in attendance this evening.
Second by Councilwoman Sterrett. Rule call. Greg?
Yes.
Hernkane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
And Kramer?
Yes.
Six yes to excuse Councilwoman Halter, Councilwoman Littman, and Councilman Therrit. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Halter and Littman and Councilman Therrit have been excused. Councilwoman Lombardi?
Okay. I'd like to give the word of service. Lord of Heaven, how long do you have in mind? That human bond, that holy covenant, on earth, if that's what is in heaven. He does the same every day, right? And he reveals our responses, that we be revealed, that we trust him against us. When he sees not his enemies, but his people, that he will arrest them evil. The values behind them, the power, and the glory, forever. Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lombardi. Is that a word for the minutes of the previous meeting transferred and open for public hearing? Yes, they are. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? No, there are not. The minutes gained approved as written. Here at number five on the agenda, where anyone from the audience may come forward and speak on any topic that does appear on tonight's agenda. If you wish to do so, please come forward to the mic, state your name, address, and topic you wish to discuss, and then on the counter there, there is a paper for your side. Seeing none, we'll move into reduction of ordinance of the resolution. Ordinance number twenty-six, 2020. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Masson, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Tremont Coffee to provide an economic development inducement grant to fund expansion costs at a property located at 215 Erie Street North, Masson, Ohio, and declaring any emergency. Councilwoman Sterrett?
Thank you, Madam President. First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty-six, 2020 has received first reading. Ordinance number twenty-seven, 2020. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety of the city of Masson, Ohio, to enter into an agreement to transfer of fuel, of diesel, and fuel oil located at the former Vanity Medical Center from the city of Masson, Ohio, to the community and Coogee Corporation of Masson, CIC, and declaring any emergency. Councilwoman Sterrett?
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance came of rather recently. I would ask that you call Mr. Maylie up to explain this to the city council members because we really haven't had a chance to see this.
Mr. Maylie, since you're so slow speaking, I'm going to ask you to go back there so we can hear you.
Sorry. Is this Mike Gordon?
Yes.
Okay. Council members, we have, to bring you up to speed, we have four underground storage makes up the hospital. Two of them have diesel fuel in them, and two of them have fuel oil. The two diesels run back to, is back to the generators in the hospital. The fuel is, well, that's for the oils. Currently, we have about 4,700 plus gallons of diesel, and about 24,000 plus gallons of fuel oil. We, the two, the four tanks, two of them are regulated by the State of Ohio, but the diesel fuel. So we are currently, we have inspections, or we had our last inspection. We are currently out of compliance. So one of the options is to get the oil and diesel out of the tanks. That's the area we pursue. And at this point, I've talked to four different companies, and I've had ranging from costing us money to not charging us money, to one company that's willing to pay some money for the, for the contents of the tanks. So that's where our map looks at us, trying to get this transfer to CIC so they can enter into contract with the company to pump the fuel oil and the diesel out.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Maylie? Councilwoman Sterrett?
So by doing this and pumping the fuel oil and diesel out of the tanks, that will put us into compliance?
It will take us out from underneath the state. To the fuel oil, put it under the state, and it's the diesel. But if we do get the out of there, we'd basically involve your jurisdiction in the state.
Because diesel companies willing to pay us?
A company's willing to pay us, yes. So much for each gallon of fuel, yeah.
Any other questions? Councilman Greg?
Thank you, Madam President. So the company that would be paying us, will they, will they charge us also to take it out, or is this strictly pay us to?
No, everybody else, we, one local company was willing to take the diesel and really wasn't interested in the other. Another one was going to charge us, the other company's going to charge us to take it out, and this company's willing to pay us. So obviously, that's a couple of words. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Sterrett?
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, since we are not in compliance with the diesel tanks, this is something I hope we, sorry, this is something I hope we could move quickly on, but obviously, tonight we cannot due to the only having six members here and being unable to waive the rules. So I believe, Mr. Maylie, we're talking about constituting a special meeting on this. So right now, I just want to get first reading, and then we'll go for the next.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty-seven, 2020 has received first reading. Ordinance number twenty-eight, 2020. An ordinance amending section two, the occupation list of class titles, city officials, law director. An ordinance number one, twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-seven, by repealing section two D, occupation list of class titles, one fifteen dash one sixteen, law director, and enacting a new section two D, occupation list of class titles, one fifteen, one sixteen, law director, in the city of Masson, Ohio, and declaring any emergency. Councilman Greg?
Thank you, Madam President. First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty-eight, 2020 has received first reading. Ordinance number twenty-nine, 2020. An ordinance amending chapter one twenty-one, counsel of the codified ordinances of the city of Masson, Ohio, by enacting a new chapter one twenty-one, counsel of the codified ordinance of the city of Masson, Ohio, pursuant to unclassified rules, section one twenty-one, point zero two R, rule sixty-eight of the codified ordinances of Masson, Ohio. Councilman Greg?
First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty-nine, 2020 has received first reading. Ordinance number thirty, 2020. An ordinance amending chapter one twenty-one, counsel, section one twenty-one, point zero two B, rule eleven, powers and duties of the codified ordinances of the city of Masson, Ohio, by enacting a new section one twenty-one, point zero two B, rule eleven, powers and duties of the codified ordinances of the city of Masson, Ohio. Councilman Greg?
First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number thirty, 2020 has received first reading. Ordinance number thirty-one, 2020. An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated bounds of the twelve thirty-four Parks and Recreation Fund for the Legends Golf Course of Masson for the year ending December thirty-first, 2020, and declaring any emergency. Councilman Lewis?
First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number thirty-one, 2020 has received first reading. Ordinance number thirty-two, 2020. An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated bounds of eleven hundred general fund for expenses at the former Vanity Medical Center for the year ending December thirty-first, 2020, and declaring any emergency. Councilman Lewis?
First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number thirty-two, 2020 has received first reading. Ordinance number thirty-three, 2020. An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated bounds of eleven hundred general fund for the mayor's breakfast for the year ending December thirty-first, 2020, and declaring any emergency. Councilman Lewis?
First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number thirty-three, 2020 has received first reading. Ordinance number thirty-four, 2020. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Law of the city of Masson, Ohio, to renew the one-year contract with the city of Canell Fulton, Ohio, for the purpose of providing prosecutorial services, and declaring any emergency. Councilman Lewis?
First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number thirty-four, 2020 has received first reading. Resolution number eight, 2020. A resolution authorizing the Director of Law of the city of Masson, Ohio, to accept the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, regarding the pursuit and the use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds, and declaring any emergency. Councilman Lewis?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to call for the law reference. This is concerning the opioid litigation. This is a potential, this is a proposal from Dave Yost, the Attorney General, and Matt LeWine, the Governor, which essentially unite the majority of plaintiffs, municipal and county plaintiffs that have not settled at this point, or otherwise engaged in litigation, to enter into a proposed agreement. This is really just an MOU, a resolution that we signed our intent that we would be available if we could resolve it under certain circumstances. We were prepared, we had some of our plaintiff's attorneys here tonight that could have gone over the MOU with us, but I think we're going to wait for, when we have a forum, to be able to do that. But with that being said, they are here, and they're willing to answer any questions with broad strokes if you guys want a little more understanding of the situation.
Mr. Yost?
I don't know any questions at this time, but anyone else does?
Anyone want, should anyone come forward?
Madam President, I would be supposing that we're going to have a special meeting Thursday to address this matter. I can speak right now.
That's fine.
I'd like to call a special meeting for this Thursday at six thirty. The conference, this special meeting would be resolution number eight dash twenty twenty, and I believe it was also requested that we include ordinance number twenty-seven dash twenty twenty in that special meeting for six thirty on March fifth. The date is set because, if I'm correct, the memorandum of understanding does have a deadline that we must sign off on. It's arbitrary, they certainly didn't play a fair as we would like them to play. They've updated this the second time already. They gave a lot of municipalities not a lot of warning, and certainly considering that some municipalities don't meet as often as we do. They had to call special meetings and/or, so it certainly doesn't exclude us, but it does show our intention to move forward to negotiate on this level as opposed to the Additionally, I would also ask that the, I believe it's number twenty-eight, the agenda's lovely, changing the title for allowing the addition of chief counsel.
So, Mr. Richards, would Monday the ninth be too late?
I mean, technically, yes. I mean, they gave us the state, and then it's arbitrary, but I think that it would certainly have more impact if it was before March sixth.
Okay. About March fifth?
Excuse me, before March sixth.
Okay. So we do have a special meeting, a request by Councilman Lewis for Thursday, March fifth, at six thirty. Okay? And, um, Diana, you'll see to the others that they get the message. Will they all be back by March fifth? That would be an actually?
I know at least many absent parties is going to be absent tomorrow.
Okay.
In the OAN, as far as the agenda that evening, when I look at special meetings, I look at a level of emergency and necessity, and I don't see any other legislation in front of us right now that meets that same level, or that is too invasive. I wouldn't be interested in extending the agenda.
Can I speak up from here?
I wouldn't be interested in extending the agenda unless other council members have a belief that there's something that's pressing and also needs to be on the agenda Thursday.
So that's resolution number eight, and ordinance number?
Twenty-seven.
And, I think Mr. Richards asked for twenty-eight to be included in that as well?
He did request it, but I'm just saying that my personal opinion, I know Steve would be necessitating that, like other members of council did, they obviously made their statement request. May I speak to the necessity?
Yes.
But I hope, may I, may I at least just say, first reading, President, remember, maybe you can keep our business for the business there. Thank you, Madam President. The necessity is that we've been without a full-time employee, and I can't move forward until, quite honestly, I can advertise a position that actually exists. I have a, I have a position for a chief prosecutor, and I don't need one. So I, it, every day that the city of Masson goes without a chief prosecutor and/or a chief counsel, that is, the city's losing out, because we have a full-time position that is not employed, and the only employee that's up is this council.
So, Mr. Littman, is that right, if you include ordinance twenty-seven and twenty-eight along with resolution eight?
My personal opinion's unchanged, but again, it would be up to you and other members of council as to whether or not I want that on the agenda. My argument would also be that I have local business that cannot contest that is concerned with whether or not they're able to stay afloat until a grant is issued. I have financing for the hospital that will not be due for another two weeks. I have a golf course, I cannot get their bunkers fixed for an additional two weeks. And all of these same departments and issues can make the same argument that they are being held up for two weeks as well.
Councilman Greg?
Thank you, Madam President. As chairperson of the Rules, Courts, and Civil Service Committee, I'd like to request that we do include twenty-eight in the agenda. I agree with you on the other, other points as well, but I guess we have to draw a line somewhere, but I'd like to have that included. I agree with our law director regarding that position.
Councilman Hernkane?
Madam President, I concur with Mr. Greg.
As do I. Since Mr. Richards is requesting it, I feel it's, we're going to put it on there. Anyone else? Okay, so we will have resolution eight, and ordinance number twenty-seven and twenty-eight are a special meeting this coming Thursday at six thirty. Madam Clerk, are there any objections? No, there is not. Are there any petitions in general communications? No, there are not. Are there any bills, accounts, and claims? Yes, we have a bill in the amount of $622 for publication of our January ordinances payable to the repository. Councilman Lewis?
I make the motion to pay the bills.
Second by Councilwoman Sterrett. Clerk will pay the bills and charge them to their proper accounts. I will say, rule call. Rule call. Hernkane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
And Greg?
Yes.
Six yes to pay the bills. Clerk will pay the bills and charge them to their proper accounts. Are there any reports from city officials? Yes, we have the Treasury's report for January 2020. Reports of committees are next week, section, next Monday the ninth at six thirty. Anyone have anything? Resolutions and requests of counsel? Seeing none, call of the calendar. Ordinance number two, 2020. An ordinance amending section one one five one point zero two of the Masson Code of nineteen eighty-five, resoning a certain tract of land from O dash one office to R dash one, one-family residential, and declaring any emergency. Councilwoman Sterrett?
Thank you, Madam President. This was tabled in order to have a public hearing that was held last Monday. There was nobody here speaking out of the interest of the ordinance. We had a couple individuals speaking in favor of the ordinance. This zoning change will have tax per command to build home on this lot. So if there's any, I would ask that we go forward to vote.
Rule call. Lewis?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Hernkane?
Yes.
Six yes for passage. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number two, 2020 has passed. Ordinance number eleven, 2020. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety of Masson, Ohio, to exercise the option to renew the engineering contract for OHM advisors for the years 2020, 2021, and 2022, and declaring any emergency. Councilman Lewis?
Yes, I'd like a call for Dave Yost, for the mayor, Reverend, if you can hear my speech.
Do you have a different inside voice?
What?
Good evening, Madam President and members of the council.
I just called for, last time it was in front of us, there were some adjustments that were being made, and we were asked to table it, so I was wondering if you could get an update on those adjustments?
So, since we have been, having our new law director since, I think, early February, he has brought to our attention that he does not think we should hire a law firm. And so we have, I'm in an engineering contractor, yes. So what we decided to do was to really research it, and we've done that, but there are discrepancies. There are discrepancies with the information that we're getting from OHM and from their advisors, and so what we're going to ask you to do tonight is to table this indefinitely. We have spoke with Representative, or excuse me, State Senator Kirk Schering, and he wants to work with us to, if there is issues with the language, to change those at the state level. We have a great relationship at OHM. They provide us with many services, and we would like to continue that. But our law director is saying that he recommends hiring a person. So we're trying to work through that, so we'd like to table this indefinitely. It is fine, according to our law director, that we work just month to month with this company until we get through the process with Senator Schering.
Councilman Lewis?
So many questions.
Let me just say that, just for the record, that every contract that we've had has been vetted by the law department previously, and has been given a green light for us to bring to counsel. So, and we have that in emails, so we do have documentation that it was okay to proceed previously, and as I shared with Mr. Richard, that we rely on our law department to direct us. And three attorneys prior to Mr. Richard directed us to take the contract and move it forward to city council.
What is the argument over a firm as compared to an individual?
The argument is that, and we had a meeting this afternoon, Mr. Richard said, we can hire a firm, but they cannot do any additional work for us.
So the argument is that when they, when we hire them as our contracted local engineer, all that additional work that we're doing that OHM has tapped into, they would be excluded from those bid processes?
According to Mr. Richard, correct. Now, our OHM advisors are telling us differently, and I want to make sure that you all understand that we follow the process, and Mr. McQ is here, and he will be able to speak to that process, and so Greg, would you come up and share that?
Good evening. Just to go back, I think we reiterated this before, there is a qualification-based election that is provided by the state of Ohio that we have to follow some rules and regulations. And we, going back into 2016, 1718, we asked for qualifications from firms. In, I believe it was April of 16, we received all the qualifications, and then when we needed to fill the city engineer's position, we went through that QBS process in asking for the city engineer. So we did follow those processes as they were requested and required by the state.
Thank you, Greg.
And I will add, one of the reasons we have this issue is that we did put out the job description and asked for applicants initially, and we need to have a PS and a PE. Those are much more expensive salaries. We did not get anyone to apply, therefore, we moved on to looking at local firms.
Councilwoman Sterrett?
Mayor, you probably don't know this off the top of your head, but how many other municipalities contract out with engineering firms this day and age? It seems like that tends to be the trend for municipalities to contract out for these specialized positions anymore.
That's correct. And even, we have one in Canell Fulton, our former engineer, Sid Pro, is the engineer for Canell Fulton. So there, and it's just not here, it's all over the state of Ohio. So Mr. Richard is correct, and what we were going to do is go to the Ohio Attorney General to get an opinion from him. However, we've learned since then that only townships and villages can ask for that opinion. So that was not an option for us. So this past, since about a month, we've been digging and trying to really uncover what is the right answer, because we did have three attorneys say move forward, and then now our new law director says, hold up, I don't think that you should do that. And then as soon as this afternoon, not to throw Mr. Richard under the bus, but said that we could hire a firm, however, he prefers to hire just an engineer.
Well, it is under certain circumstances, that's what we.
Mr. Richards, could you just?
Sure. I mean, just to clarify, I said that it was my, my legal opinion, we, we could go that route, but that would only be if, if there were no individuals that were qualified, if we did our due diligence in search of them. We said that we did that three years ago. I would like to see that done again, but certainly, that's my opinion, and you ultimately don't have to follow. But it's not illegal to hire a firm as, as a place, like Councilwoman Sterrett said, certainly the trend. The trend cannot be when a department director who's now an entity is either appointed by the municipality, has engineers underneath them that are then assigning work back to that engineering firm. That violates ORC 2921, that prohibits an official, or in this case, an official firm, from having any interest in profits or benefits of a public contract entered into for a public agency with which they are enacted. So, yes, if, if we, if we went about that route again and report an So, yes, if, if we, if we went about that route again and required an engineer, and we did due diligence, and there was absolutely no candidates, I would say that our only hope, because we have to have an engineer, would be to hire an engineering firm and then say, it could be OHM, but then they would not be able to do any of the projects, or vice versa, we could hire, uh, an alternate firm that applied as soon as we went through the QFRs, and then they would be excluded from doing that.
So to continue to muddy the waters, um, the National Society of Professional Engineers offers an opinion where in fact they can do that. And so it really is unclear, and that's why we, uh, went to Senator Shering to say, "If there's an opportunity, can you look at this and really kind of clear this up for us uh, through the state legislature, and if the law needs to be changed, you know, uh, we'd like to ask him to change that." And he said he would certainly work through that process.
And to be clear, that opinion was not using Ohio ethics.
I don't know.
No, I know, but I, I clarified today. That was not using our specific Ohio ethics, which would be the standard that we would have to hold our engineers with. That was the national standard, not the specific Ohio ethics.
Thank you.
Yes, um, one more question for the mayor.
Yes.
Do you ever see those referenced by the law director, that ORC? Have we ever had any, um, dealings with that ORC in the past, or where we've had an issue with it?
I know that our city engineer that we let go, uh, had an issue years ago.
That was part of that city ORC?
But that person was providing his own, um, he was approving his own plans, so that was, it was a little bit different scenario.
Councilman, um, Lombardi.
So it might understand that if we did hire a full-time engineer, we're still going to have to hire a firm when we need specialized engineering projects such as electrical or mechanical, but this engineer isn't specialized in.
Gray, do you want to answer that question? Does he answer yes? He answers yes.
Councilwoman Kramer.
Um, so my question is, our contract that expired December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, and we're now going into March, we have no contract, so what are we doing in between? I don't believe, is there an evergreen clause in the previous contract to keep it going until we get this?
According to our law director, we spoke about that, um, over and over, uh, because we do have a lot going on right now, and he does not believe we should, um, uh, abandon working with OHM at this point. Uh, would you like to speak to it?
Sure. Essentially, we've gone to a...
Just to keep the quorum, the mayor cannot, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, you cannot call the law director. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were respecting the...
Absolutely.
Would you like to call the law director? Mr. Richard, would you?
Thank you. My apologies to the council. Sorry, what was the thought?
It was about, um...
Month-to-month.
The contract.
One month, month.
Um, month-to-month.
It essentially goes to a month-to-month. It, we're, we're in a contract, so, uh, we, each month, we're in the middle of these projects. I think that it would be more detrimental to the city to halt, uh, if there is damage done previously. Um, it was done under the council, uh, not the council, but council, ACL, uh, of the previous law directors. So, I think it's essentially water under the bridge, but I would just warn in entering into future contracts, certainly the ones of these proposed lengths, that we do it correctly, and that's all, that was my hesitation, trepidation.
And I will, um, uh, we have emails, uh, from both Andrew Scass and Gary Frye that says, um, "Thank you for your hard work, this is good to take to council." So, um, we have that, and we also have one, I believe, from Perry Sturgis, uh, when he was the law director. So, uh, I, as I shared with Mr. Richard when he took the position, we really rely on the legal, um, uh, experience and expertise of our law department, and we send everything to our law department. So, we're not going to bring it to you unless we get the go-ahead and the approval, and we typically, uh, have a paper trail, uh, for us to follow back on. So we do have that as well.
Councilman Lewis.
I'd like to call Representative from OHM.
Thank you, Mr. Grab.
Good evening.
Mr. Grab, thank you for being in attendance this evening. Um, obviously, you are well brought, speed with everything that we discussed this evening.
Yes.
Um, as a representative of OHM, are you, um, able to say that you guys are willing to continue to provide us with services that we need until we find resolution?
I absolutely am, and, um, I have a few other things to add, if I'm allowed, that's okay.
Yeah, just give me one moment, and then I'll open up. Um, at what rate? Is it going to be at our previous contract rate, at the, kind of at the rate that you're suggesting on this new contract?
You know, I, yeah, I mean, what it would be, obviously, we would prefer the, the rate we had discussed, but I don't know legally what, what would be, we would abide by whatever the city decided on that.
Well, we appreciate that, and then, um, I guess I'll open up the floor, um, if you would like to add your, um, information or opinion on this concern.
Yeah, oh, I'd really like to pass along to council, and obviously, this is, yeah, a little uncomfortable tonight, it's also something that, that the administration and I and Mr. Richard have talked about extensively, and obviously, it's our goal to do whatever is right, that, that's what's behind this. Um, in a little history, um, you know, I've been serving a city engineer role for twenty years in various places, and, um, you know, this is the first time I've had this come up where there was any question about, first, whether a consultant could be a city engineer, and secondly, whether it was ethical to provide services as a city engineer. Um, and I think that's something we need to work out. Um, I think maybe it's a sense that ORC is a little unclear on this, um, but in any, in any case, we've decided the best thing to do is to work through this, and so whatever time that takes, and it may take some time to get things through the state house, the important thing is we want to get to the right decision, and we all certainly want to do everything just correct and right, and that's for all of that, that's our number one goal. Number two, um, in my conversations with ACDC Ohio, who represents hundreds of engineering companies across the state, um, they have certainly highlighted this as a, as an issue that could affect many, many firms, probably a hundred cities or more across the state, um, that are doing exactly what you're doing today. This is not just Nassau, and this would impact tons and tons of communities across the state, the whole engineering industry itself. So, um, just know that everyone is taking this seriously, we're taking it through the right courses, and when we have that final answer, we'll bring that to you. You know, I certainly respect Mr. Richard bringing this forward, and we're going to make sure it's answered properly, and if that requires, uh, legislation change at the state level, then that's, that's what it requires. Um, but we sort of have enjoyed the last three and a half years being your city engineer, we'd love to continue, um, you know, obviously, as a consulting firm with over five hundred people, we bring a lot of different services to the table, you're not going to get through one person, I think, to Mr. Lombardi's point. Um, that's one of the, the benefits you get with a consulting firm, especially one that can provide all the things we can. And I think over the years, that's sort of food now, be good value, you know, really good value to the city. So, um, I just want to really pass along that we're going to work through this, whatever it takes, it may take a few months, and, you know, as long as you'll continue to have us, in that meantime, we will certainly have to be there.
Anyone have county questions? Councilman Lewis.
Thank you. I will say, after hearing all those discussions evening, um, something doesn't add up to me, I, I think there's a lot of dots there, um, something just doesn't quite seem right. And for that reason, um, I would say that, to the matter, to the mayor's request, I personally do not feel comfortable making a motion to table indefinitely, um, because I feel like we need to keep this in the forefront of council. Um, so my preference would be to make a motion where we would only table it till the people sit, and that way we'd our assurance updates. One such update that I would be looking for as a member of this council, I would want to see where, um, what other communities in the state of Ohio have already had to deal with challenges of this nature, where they have had a, um, engineering firm that takes care of their city engineering or municipal engineering, um, needs, but then they also bid on, uh, special projects that are outside of that contract, and when that has been challenged by a third party as being legal or non-legal, or, or whatever other concern that may be. And I'd also possibly be looking for some kind of opinion from the Ohio Ethics Commission to see how they, um, come out on, on such issue, um, as we move forward. I personally don't even know if I'm in favor of this contract. I have my own concerns and questions as to whether, um, contracting out, whether a firm is truly better than this hiring, and how, this just adds another element, and I am wondering if we all researched. So unless anyone objects, I would like to make a motion that we table ordinance number eleven dash twenty-twenty until April sixth, two thousand and twenty.
Second by Councilwoman Starett, roll call.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Starett.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hearn Kane.
Yes.
And Lewis.
Yes.
Six yes to table ordinance number eleven, twenty-twenty, until April sixth, twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number eleven, twenty-twenty has been tabled. Third reading ordinances and resolutions, there are none. Second reading ordinances and resolutions, there are none. New miscellaneous business? Okay, word number seventeen, remarks of, uh, this delegation. Anyone to come forward and speak on any topic that did not appear on tonight's agenda? Again, if you wish to do so, please come forward, state your name, address, and topic you wish to discuss, and please, um, leave your comments just for you.
Madam President, council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm James Hobbusto, two-four-four-three, with Marietta in the southeast, and I would like to address once again the RESI. Um, we've got an awful lot of stuff going on in our city. This has been a topic that's been going on and on for years. Um, we heard during the election cycle that from people that are now citizens of the year, that this would cost us twelve million to put a body of water, put all over social media. Not true. We heard the amount for restoring the reservoir as it was, five million, seven million, we never had an actual number, nor an official estimate, so not really true. Then we heard option two, which was the pond, would cost us one and a half million dollars, plus a little bit more maintenance. Well, recently, the park board came back and said they can do that pond with actual little bit of research for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's true. As many of us discussed, it wouldn't take that much money to put a reasonable pond, size doesn't matter, but roughly five acres at ten feet deep, but that can be worked with, but three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, other conversations that went on, we talked about how the park board is paying off debt that belongs to more than just the parks, and we decided, we heard right from the administration on October eighth, that that's not fair, that they've paid all this debt, and we could allocate possibly a hundred thousand dollars, or possibly more, in the budget to pay that debt. I think that's a great idea. But now that the park board has voted three to two to go ahead and pursue funding for the reservoir, they've talked about getting a grant for that. Now, grants are great, I understand, we live by the grant, we die by the grant. However, my concern is, since nineteen ninety-five, the citizens of this city have paid for the reservoir over and over and over again, to the tune of millions of dollars. What I'm doing as a citizen is simply coming to you again and making an official request of this council, would you please find money in that four and a half million dollars or so overflow, previously two-point-seven million, and I can go back further, would you please find simply three hundred and fifty thousand dollars so we don't have to keep on hearing we're working on a grant? Maybe this year, maybe next year, maybe this fall, maybe next year. We have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this city, our citizens deserve the park, and our administration has said parks make a better quality of life for all people. That's true. Please fund, find money, and fund our reservoir for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbusto. Anyone else?
I would just like to remind you...
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I hear that, my name's Carol Connolly, I live at eight-twenty-five Campbell Circle Northeast. I'd like to remind you of how wonderful the reservoir is. Back in the seventies, I got a solo license for an airplane, my first solo flight, I flew over Massal, my mother's house, and the RESI, and when I saw the RESI, right there in the middle of all this urban civilization, the blue sky was reflected in the water, the walls were white and sparkly, it was so gorgeous. So every flight that I took after that, first thing I would do would come out of the Beach City Airport, go over the reservoir, and, um, uh, well, and then I found a lot of newspaper clippings lately about the reservoir. Maybe, maybe some people are old enough to remember, Relapots from the library, nice librarian, um, she used to swim in the reservoir at six-thirty every morning before she went to work. And, uh, at that time, they had the diving, um, deck, and, um, she's, she, uh, said the water was so clear you could see fish, and she'd do that every single morning. And, um, also, we call it the premier park, and I don't know what would make it premier if we're just like every other park with a creek running through. I think a large water feature really benefits any community, and I think we, uh, it was really a not necessary thing to have this taken from us. I mean, I trust was broken because we voted and thought it would be maintained forever. And I, I just, and this will probably ramp piece of really eccentric, but for my retirement, part of what I wanted to do was to study, uh, snails and the bivalve, the little plants that are in the reservoir. There are many of them, not much research has been done on them, and I wanted to make an independent study of that, and I hope I still can. I hope we get the reservoir back. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else? Seeing none, Councilman Lombardi.
My motion, Richard.
Seconded by Councilwoman Starett. Any other?